I would like to call to order the October 7th Milford City Council meeting. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, will you please call the votes?
Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
All right, we have a very special presentation today from Chief Mills. And families, if you want to come up in the front and take pictures, feel free to.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. If I could have my three newest officers, Edwin in the first spot, Jason to his right, and Colin to Jason's right, just right in here. I'm pleased to introduce our newest officers, Edwin McFadden, Jason Flynn, and Colin Blevins. Officer McFadden holds an Associate's Degree in Applied Science from Hocking Hills College and has eighteen years of experience, most recently as a Sergeant with the Hamilton County Park District. Officer Flynn graduated from the Claremont College Police Academy in 2011 and served with the Villages of Williamsburg and Fairfax. Officer Blevins graduated from the Butler Tech Police Academy in 2022 and has served with the Georgetown and Bethel Police Departments, most recently as a Sergeant. Before that, he served as a Combat Medic in the Army. As you can see, each of these officers is joined tonight by friends and family members. A career in public safety requires serious commitment from both the officer as well as family, so I'm glad to see these officers have a strong support system. Tonight is the culmination of a months-long process. The selection process has many aspects, and there is a reason for that. We are very selective about who we let wear the uniform and badge of a Milford Police Officer. Tonight, you gentlemen earn the right to wear our badge and are officially indoctrinated as a member of the Milford Police Department, a family with a heritage that extends back to the 1800s. The first police badges were a coat of arms worn by knights. The coat of arms identified the knight and his allegiance to justice, chivalry, and his royal leaders. Police officers swore to protect and serve, the same as knights from the medieval era, were often sworn in and asked to protect the weak, defenseless, helpless, and fight for the general welfare of all. Tonight, your badges are new and shiny. Over the years, they will acquire scratches and scuffs, but it's your responsibility to ensure that they remain untarnished. For when an officer tarnishes his or her badge, they tarnish the badge of every officer, including those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. In addition to your oath of office, which I have previously administered, every Milford Police Officer is required to take the IACP Oath of Honor. It's now time for you to take this solemn pledge with me. Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. On my honor,
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character.
My integrity and my character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will treat all individuals with dignity and respect.
I will treat all individuals with dignity and respect.
And ensure that my actions are dedicated
And ensure that my actions are dedicated.
To ensuring the safety of my community.
To ensuring the safety of my community.
And the preservation of human life.
And the preservation of human life.
I will always have the courage to hold myself
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community and the agency I serve.
My community and the agency I serve.
Thank you, guys. It's now my pleasure to present you with the Milford Police Badge. The badge is to be worn over your heart for two reasons. One, to ever remind you of your pledge to protect, and because the left arm was the arm that held the shield protecting the heart, leaving the dominant hand to fight with a weapon. Each of these gentlemen has wisely chosen their spouses to pin their badges on them tonight, so we can have them come forward. There we go. I told you it's hard. Thank you, ladies. Well done. And you can stay up here with your husbands. Remember, the name on your badge represents who you serve, and the name on your nameplate represents who raised you. It's your responsibility to represent both with honor and integrity. I have no reason to doubt that all of you will do that. Next, I'd like to present each of you with our challenge coin. There are varying tales about the origin of challenge coins. Some say that it dates back to the Roman Empire, others credit a young fighter pilot from the First World War. For us, it's a symbol of honor and a constant reminder that we are doing something worthwhile. On the front, it proudly displays the core values that every officer is committed to living by, and on the back, you'll find our motto, "Am I Doing the Right Thing at the Right Time, in the Right Way, and for the Right Reason?" You're to carry your coin with you at all times and are permitted, in certain situations, to give it to a citizen who exemplifies our core values. I know that tonight you feel the same honor and sense of accomplishment, as well as the awesome responsibility that is bestowed upon you. This is my charge to you. Every time you place that badge on your chest for the rest of your career, I hope you'll reflect on the feelings you have tonight and remember one of my favorite quotes. If you do this job properly, there is nothing nobler you will do with your life. Congratulations and welcome to the team.
You can come up and take a picture up front if you'd like to. Get out of the way.
I think spouses, you want to be in the pictures?
Yes.
Families?
Families?
Yeah.
Families, you want to come up with them for a big group picture?
Aw, there you got a smile.
Thank you, welcome.
You're very welcome. And please help yourself to those Sravati cookies in the hallway.
Welcome and congratulations, and families, you are free to leave and go celebrate. I don't think you want to stay.
We always lose our audience.
I know.
You've got to stop letting them go.
Right, we will continue on with the agenda. Tonight, we also have a presentation from a person who's a very important part of our Claremont County. Right now, it's the Executive Director of Claremont County Mental Health and Recovery Board, Leanne Watson.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for that nice introduction. Wow, what a hard act to follow there. That was really heartwarming. I have to tell you, one of the things that the levy funds is CIT, or Crisis Intervention Team, training for our first responders, and particularly our police. And so that's so cool to, I was telling Chief Mills, that brought tears to my eyes. So, I mean, that's such a cool thing. So, thank you for your time. Councilman Velardo said I had about twenty-five minutes, is that correct? No.
There's an egg timer after about three, though.
I'll be very brief. So, thank you for your time, and I did provide you guys with some information. And I have some sign if anybody's interested. So, I just wanted to spend a few minutes to tell you a little bit about our mental health levy that's on the ballot on November 4th. So, it is a .75 renewal, which means no new taxes. So, our levy is, the cost of that is fifteen dollars per hundred thousand. And that levy brings in 3.3 million dollars into our system every year, and that is over a third of our budget. So, our budget is a little bit under eight million dollars a year. And let me tell you a little bit about what that funds. That funds essential services, behavioral health services in our community. Can you guys hear me? Okay. So, when I say behavioral health, that means mental health as well as substance use. So, it funds our crisis hotline, as well as our mobile crisis team, mental health services, medication treatment for individuals that have an opioid use disorder, services for our adults that have a serious and persistent mental illness, such as schizophrenia. It also provides a safety net for our residents that do not have insurance or have a high deductible. So, it allows people to have access to the needed behavioral health services regardless of the ability to pay. We realized how important that was. We always knew it was important, but it really came to light during the opioid epidemic. So, it allowed people that had that opioid addiction to access treatment when they needed it. So, that was very important. So, our services reach 25,000 of our residents every year, and that's one in five residents. So, we have a great reach with a pretty small budget. So, I'm sure you guys are all aware, since COVID, there's been a pretty substantial increase in behavioral health needs in our community, particularly with our youth. So much so that the Attorney General has declared it a crisis state for our youth. So, I just want to share real quick some of the stats that we're seeing locally. We've seen a 53% increase in the use of our crisis services since 2020. We've also had a 17%, excuse me, we've also had a 42% increase in calls from our youth under the age of seventeen. So, that's 42% increase in calls in our youth under the age of seventeen. One of our initiatives that we're working on, that the levy will also fund, is a crisis receiving center, and that's similar to urgent care for behavioral health needs. And it'll be somewhat of a drop-off center for our, primarily our first responders will be able to use that. And it'll be somewhere where people can get connected to treatment and get immediate help for, you know, people that are in behavioral health crisis. So, we're very excited about that. It's been a big gap in our system, and we've been working with our first responder partners to get this up and running. So, again, that'll be funded in part through opioid settlement money from the county, as well as our levy funding. So, as I mentioned, this is a renewal, so no new taxes. This does make over a third of our budget and funds vital services in our community that unfortunately would have to be cut if we do not pass this levy. As I said, I left you information about the levy. You can look on our website for more information, and I'm here to answer questions if you have any questions.
Anybody?
I did that great of a
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, though. It's very important.
All right, thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from September 16th?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And financial statements, do I have a motion to adopt the August 2025 financial report?
So moved. Second?
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes. And that takes us to public comments. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment? Vanessa? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I am Vanessa Hannah. I live at 922 Forest Avenue. I just came in tonight. I'm actually here with a couple hats on. I wanted to give you guys a couple updates about Valley View and then also talk about Porch Fest. So, I'll start with Valley View. I really wanted to, you know, we've had a really busy fall, and it's been a really rewarding fall. And I wanted first and foremost to thank the city, you as a council, and each of you individually. You've come at us with support from a lot of different directions. We've asked for it. You've been there for us, and it's greatly appreciated, and it certainly has been instrumental in helping us reach some really important goals this year. And I just want to make sure that you know how much it means to us and the support of the community. We, you know, we have community partners like you. Your very generous support and donation is really critical to us in keeping the wheels running and turning, literally. And we also have, you know, when I look at the city as a partner, we also include fire and the police department in that. We have 190 acres with about 20,000 people on site throughout the year and a lot of ways to get out there. So, police, you know, the safety services, they do an amazing job as partners to us to make sure people feel welcomed and safe when they're on the property. And I think it's important for us, it's important for us in the city, and we're very proud to be a part of the fabric of why people want to visit Milford. So, good things are happening. We've had a really busy September. A lot of you came to the toast. Thank you for those that were able to join us. I also want to give a shout out to our community members and neighbors who came out. There are so many wonderful things to do on any Saturday night, especially in the fall, in the city of Milford and Cincinnati, and it means the world to us that people came out and chose to spend their time and to support our work. We had a great night. We had perfect weather, thankfully. I was glad for Art Affair that they had great weather, too. But it was a great night, you know, kind of celebrating community purpose, and it was a successful fundraiser for us also, which is really important to us. Part of that was also, we launched what we call our Giving Tree Program. I think the community would be interested in knowing what we're going to do there. You know, our master plan at the south end, we've got our new shelter. We're finishing up our accessible trail and designated parking. We're actually going to have parking versus just the field where people stop their cars. I'm sure Mike's Car Wash has loved that, but a little bit of designated parking will be great with gravel so that anybody can get in there. And then the other thing we want to do, and we've talked and dreamed about it for a long time, on Lotteman Lane, that road that goes back, you know, between, whether you're going to Patterson or Valley View, you're on that city road called Lotteman Lane. And we really wanted everybody, whether the kids going to school or visitors to Valley View, you turn off South Milford Road and you're having an experience already. And so, thanks to, you know, the folks that jumped right into our Giving Tree Program at the toast, and we've got it on our website, we're going to line Lotteman Lane with eight-foot natives all the way down to the parking area with the school. Patterson was amazing. I mentioned it to Rob Dunn, and PTO stepped up, and Patterson stepped up, so we're going to do both sides of that road. So, it'll be a really beautiful entrance, not just for now, next year, the next decade, but for generations to come. So, it is truly kind of legacy lane. If anybody's interested, on our website is all the information if somebody wanted to have a tree and commit a tree to the lane in honor of somebody, memory of somebody, or just to celebrate their family name. So, that's good news. That's a cool thing, I think. And then the other thing I wanted to share, I was here earlier in the fall asking for a resolution of support for our Clean Ohio application. And on September 25th, just a couple days before the toast, the N-Rac Board did in fact vote to fund our project. Thank you for the support for that as well. That helped. That's wildly exciting to us. We have, I think I mentioned to you, we have about 55, 60 acres that are really, there's urgency around addressing those before they really get away from us, abandoned ag fields with invasive. So, it's about a $325,000 project that'll take place over the course of the next two years. So, we look forward to doing that. I think it'll be a really exciting way to involve the community. We've got to have a lot of habitat hikes. We need some monitoring and help planting and all that fun stuff. So, we're excited about that, and I think that'll really lift the experience at Valley View for our community and the people that come and visit. So, those are my big ones for Valley View. I do want to add that another community partner, Tim Sense and LTD Landscaping, I talked about the Giving Trees, and that project's possible because of Tim's incredible generosity toward the project, selecting the species of trees, and his like Christmas morning in one day, so. But we Road Service B Corp Corporation, and they're doing kind of a celebratory service day. And so, they're also adding to some of our tree line down there to help separate pedestrian vehicular traffic on the property line. Instead of putting a fence, we're going to be putting in more native trees and bushes, and they're helping do that. So, big, big community push and contribution, so it'll be great. Now, onto Porch Fest, changing my hats. I'm really honored to be a part of the committee this year in working with Elizabeth and Vicky and Leslie and Maren and Emily. They are, they have created this amazing event in short order, in short time. They are the spirit and heart behind it, and they've done an amazing job. Porch Fest is October 18th, Saturday, October 18th, from 12 to 7. At this point, we've got like 70 bands lined up. We've got 50-plus porches that will be hosting throughout the city and businesses as well. So, it's going to be an amazing day. Kickoff is at noon. We've got the Milford Eagle Marching Band coming to kick things off at noon at the Five Points Landing Park at Stage One, and then off everybody goes to all the places that they can find. There, we've got a lot of information out there. Anybody interested in Porch Fest in terms of the map, the lineup, the times, things like that? We have a website that's oldmilfordporchfest.com. I also encourage people to follow Old Milford Porch Fest on both Instagram and Facebook. All the information's there. There are some great posts going out. You can see who's going to be where and when. And then there's also even a signup genius. If people are around and want to get help out for an hour or two, there are some ways to do that. And also great merchandise. The merchandise is going pre-sale right now. There'll be a little bit maybe on site if we don't sell out, but if somebody really wants this year's Porch Fest merch, they need to get online and grab that. We have the lineup on the back, which is really pretty cool, kind of concert style. So, that's out there, too.
Vanessa, for someone who has no idea what it is, could you explain a little bit more about what they're going to do?
Yeah, so Porch Fest is, you know, this diverse group of bands, musicians that play on people's porches. We have, if you went to Old Mill downtown, about a one-mile radius, you're going to have bands on people's personal porches, yards, side yards, front yards, backyards, all over. The businesses downtown have bands that are going to be coming at varying times throughout, from that 12 to 7 time period. It is free to walk around. We encourage people to, you know, grab great food and drinks from our local restaurants and bars, and then, you know, walk, ride a bike, maybe a scooter if you're good at it, and tool around Milford and see as many porches as you can. Right now, all through, I meant to bring one in, all through the city, you'll see yard signs that are kind of purple and pink, and they say porch host. Anybody who sees one of those, there's going to be music playing somewhere between 12 and 7. So, on Instagram, on the social media and website, you'll see the lineup and the timeframes. You can kind of look by the timeframes and where you want to go and what you want to do. So, it's really, you know, it's a lot of fun. And I want to thank the city for sponsoring the event, and that's a huge help, of course. And also give a shout out to Lovens Insurance, KMK Law, Wealth Quest, HMA, and Harvest Market, who have also stepped up. So, we're excited about that. I think I've said what I need to share with you. Any questions about Porch Fest, or have I forgotten anything for those who maybe are out there? Hopefully, our citizens who haven't done it, I know I caught on to it last year, and it was just the coolest thing to walk around and hear music everywhere. Some yards have, you know, some chairs out. You can certainly take a blanket with you. People welcome you to sit and listen and enjoy the music at their host site. So, we're looking forward to it. It's going to be a day with, a great day in Milford with great vibes everywhere. So, we hope everybody comes out and enjoys that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Any questions?
Thanks for all the updates on Valley View, too.
Yeah, I just, sorry, I just threw a lot at you, but thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Anybody else like to make a public comment? Hi, come on up.
Hello, Ralph. Ralph was the one who told me I can speak even though I'm a Miami township.
You are. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Amber Armin. My name is Amber Armin. I reside at 5487 Bunker Hill Drive in Miami Township, and I am the owner of Bunker Hill Bakery. Some of you may know me as the sourdough lady at the City of Milford Farmers Market. And I am here tonight to thank the city for all of the support that we have received with our farmers market. Personally, I am very impressed with the growth that we had from our first year to this year. We had several new vendors, and I know for me, I doubled my farmers market income, and it equated to a quarter of my total income for my business. So, it was very important for me. What may seem like a small Saturday event has an incredible ripple effect on our community. It gives small businesses like mine a place to grow and connect and reach local families. It helps keep dollars in Milford. I know for us personally, we have a little joke. For any tips that I get, I always say, "All tips go to the family ice cream fund," and we always go to a small, local business, pay cash, no credit cards involved, and no chains. It helps to keep our dollars in Milford, supports agriculture, and builds the type of relationships that make our community feel like home. So, each week, we see neighbors catching up over coffee, dogs playing in the dog park, live music being enjoyed, and people connecting face to face, something we desperately need in this time where everything is, the market for the support of local families. This only happens because the council values spaces like the home in the mornings to set up tents and tear things down and support us in so many ways. It really means so much to me. Janet, who was there all the time. Thank you to each of the city council members and city staff members who have personally supported us. It is so meaningful when you come out to the market and support our local businesses and connect with your community. A special thank you as well to Shannon Roll for her incredible dedication. She keeps everything running smoothly and always makes sure the community knows when and where to find us. Her energy and commitment were a huge part of what makes our market so special. The market has become more than just a place to sell goods. It is a place where friendships grow and our community truly comes together, and that's because of your support. So, from all of us vendors at the City of Milford Farmers Market, I thank you for helping us make the market what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
Sharing your goods. Would anybody else like to make? Sharing your goods. Would anybody else like to make a comment? All right, that takes us to the city manager report. Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll apologize in advance. I'm recovering from a sickness, so if I'm hard to understand, I do apologize. Before I get into the event, I, I did want to bring up two things that, I don't think Vanessa gave herself enough credit with that Value View grant. I think that was like $200,000 or $250,000. So that's a huge, huge grant. And although we wrote a letter of support, really, that was all Vanessa. So I, I did want to acknowledge that. I also wanted to acknowledge the farmers market. I was able to attend quite a few, and although I wasn't here the previous years, I, I know that Parks and Rec spent a lot of time, and Shannon really put a lot of effort into this, and I've been impressed. And I wanted to acknowledge and, and make sure that the credit was passed along to those that deserve it. And, and all the vendors, obviously, we, we don't have a farmers market without the vendors. So, thank you for that. Onto my city manager report. I attended several events, Art Affair, Valley View, Main Street, Heroes Golf Outing, and Night of the Stars, all excellent events. I think that's a testament to our community and our partners, that we have all this great stuff going on here in the, in the city of Milford. The other thing I really wanted to touch on is the Municipal Hospitality Workshop that city staff, or I should say Team Milford, that also included the fire department. Last Wednesday and Thursday, almost every employee with the City of Milford in two shifts at the fire department attended this Municipal Hospitality Workshop. The, the primary focus of this was customer service within local government. So how is it that we can excel with our customer service initiatives, external communication, even if it's, you know, what is it that people see on our, on our main corridors in our, in our neighborhoods? So if there's a weed growing up, what, what does that say? What, what does that say about us as a city? What does that say about the staff, the residents? And, and I, I really think it was a good workshop, and there's a lot that is going to be as a result of that heading into next year, as it relates to our customer service initiative. So, all the council received the workbook. The first twenty pages is really a summary. In fact, our law director even got one, too. He's, he's been reading it all meeting.
Nobody's better municipal hospitality than
So, I encourage you to read the first, I think it's about twenty pages, and it really is a good summary as to what we sort of discussed. You can go into the workbook and, and fill out as much as you can, but certainly a lot of that had to do with the presentation, and, and that might not be as effective as if you were there. But I encourage everyone to look at that. And, and heading into next meeting, there's going to be several items that I discussed that will be, that will sort of come full circle as it relates to, as it relates to our customer service initiatives. Moving on, city staff met with Representative Gene Schmidt to discuss the upcoming state capital budget. The Maine and Lila Project, sidewalk replacement project is well underway. They're really making some good progress. I wanted to make sure that I, I appreciate, or gave recognition or thanked the community for their patience. I know there's been traffic reconfigurations. I know there's some inconveniences there. But this is really a, a key project. The city was able to leverage a $750,000 grant for this project. And this brings the sidewalks into ADA compliance. Certainly aesthetically is more pleasing, but, you know, one of the goals that we've discussed is making this community a walkable community, or, or a bikeable community. So I think this is a good effort to ensure that we have the proper amenities to support that. And I see a lot of people using those sidewalks, so I'm excited for that to be completed. Looking ahead, the City of Milford will be sending out the cemetery mowing contract that expired this year, so we need to ensure that we get that out to bid going into next year. The last two things, going into the next council meeting, I plan on discussing the Milford rate study in conjunction with the utility budget. So I'll be sending that out to council here soon to review in advance of that meeting. That's, that's really an important meeting to make decisions. And, and really why I want that to work together is, we can, we can complete that study, but it's, it's really interpreting it. How, how does that affect the budget? And there's several things that we can adjust within the budget that is, really, that revolves around that, that rate study. And then we'll discuss some of the customer service initiatives. And then lastly, office hours with the city manager will be back. We are going to discuss the proposed charter changes and really just highlight some of the facts behind that as to what does that truly mean? So that way our residents are informed. And then some of our customer service initiatives, we're going to look for feedback on that. So, that is all I have unless there's any questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. That takes us to Chief Mills and the police report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You, those donations Tom Seaman Great Social, Aaron and Rachel Witt, local residents, Nikki Smith, also a resident, and someone who's no stranger to any of us, Jay Rothenback, for all of their hard work, not just planning it, but working that, that event. So huge debt of gratitude and thank you to them. You may have seen in the news yesterday or today, we had a silver alert when a seventy-nine-year-old resident with dementia got lost. But thanks to flock cameras, we recovered him today in Indiana. He's back home safe. So, good use of those cameras. And last but not least, our second year for No Tricks Just Treats. You can register on our Facebook page, or you can call the station or City Hall. It's for residents only, but it's a way for us to make Halloween a special day for kids with disabilities or special needs. We will hand-deliver some Halloween candy to them on
On the trucks, you'll be passing out candy here at City Hall?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we'll have our command trailer here, and we'll have officers in neighborhoods with the candy and the glow bracelets. So that's Friday, October 31st, from 6 to 8. Hope to see you there. Pray for good weather.
Yes, thanks. All right, that takes us to Fire and EMS, Chief Baird.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to announce that the antique pumper has been taken to the restoration shop, and they are underway getting the work done on it. I don't have a timeline of when it's going to return, but I feel comfortable that they are definitely working towards getting it ready to go by, at the latest Santa Sunday, and hopefully for the hometown for the holidays, so we can do our truck rides like we normally do. We were recently notified that we received a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant in the amount of $11,428.57 for training another one of our firefighters as a paramedic. We have actually two firefighters who will be going to paramedic school next year on grants, one from last year's grant cycle, this one from the one just announced. So we're very pleased for that. Our local match is about five percent of that amount. So we're, it's really a great, great value and get more paramedics on the streets of Milford as quickly as we can. And want to acknowledge the Wyler Fastlane, that was great. We've, we've been involved in it quite a number of years. It's, we're more bystanders in support than anything. Jamie and the Cincinnati Police Department, Jamie's Department, Cincinnati Police Department, and Wyler just put, it's just an outstanding event. If you've never been down there on a Sunday when they do that, just go down there to the Wyler when they come back from Cincinnati. Those kids are just nothing but whites, teety smiles, and it's just great to see it. So I invite you to join us next year for that event, just, just for a few minutes. And finally, I want to acknowledge the family of retired Wayne Township Fire Chief Charles Nosse. Charlie is the father of our Fire Marshal Philip, and one of our part-time firefighter EMTs, Eric, grandfather to him. Charlie, longtime chief here in the county, passed away last week after, after a lengthy illness. The funeral was held today. That was a lot of the circumstances going on next door with all the additional fire departments and everything there. Terrible weather. You know, we go for months and have beautiful weather, and it rained today, but everybody worked through it. And Charlie was a, was a heck of a fire chief. Ralph will tell you, that goes back a few years.
Oh, yeah.
But he was one of those that
What was his shop? He had that shop up on
Forget.
He did work pretty much out of his own pocket a lot of times back then.
Philip and Eric, your thoughts? So, any questions for me? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. That takes us to council comments. Anyone from council have a comment? Seeing none. That takes us to our committee of the whole meeting. Do I have a motion to open the Milford Committee of the Whole Meeting?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, so I will call the main to order, and Jackie, will you please take the role?
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
That takes us to public comments. If anybody from the public want to comment on anything about committee of the whole agenda? All right, seeing none, we will turn it over to Mr. Gunderson and discuss the topics.
Thank you, Mayor. First on the agenda is the TIF ordinance. As a friendly reminder, and within the packet, you'll see back in July, July 15th exactly, the city discussed the creation of the TIF over at the area development area. Back in July, we passed what we would consider the Economic Development Plan. There's a very specific process that we follow, and, and within the process, we're at the TIF, and, and then we would create the fund. So, as a reminder, the the TIF would be a ten-year, seventy-five percent TIF. It's within the area development area specifically. So it's, 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 what we have the ability to do is, we have the ability to capture the increased tax, or taxable value of the properties within that district, and then we're able to utilize that for expenditures, public improvements, but expenditures that are laid out within the TIF ordinance itself. So, once again, as part of the process, we pass the Economic Development Plan, which is a requirement. We then now move into, after the, the allotted time for public notice, school district notice, we now go into the formal process to enact the TIF ordinance. So by doing that, we would then be able to create the fund and then start utilizing the TIF under the eligible uses.
I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance declaring improvements to parcels of real property to be a public purpose, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels, establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the sludge removal invoice. We have an invoice. So the sludge removal, what, what that is, that's down at the wastewater plant. So as they go through the processing, we've got a, a press. And essentially, what we do is we press the, the solids out into, there's different, there's different ways. There's two approaches. We've got a dry embed, and then we've got, say, a roll-off container that we can press the solids into, and then we dispose of it. The wastewater plant has been very frugal this year, and they've utilized their dry, on an ongoing monthly basis. Reach full capacity at that dry embed, which is why we had to start hauling it off at Rumkey. So, or utilizing Rumkey. So, due to this being above my spending limit, I need to get council's approval to pay the invoice.
Is this something that generally goes out for bid, or was Rumkey selected for any specific reason?
So, we are actually part of the county. The county has a contract with Rumkey to do all of the sludge removal. So, what I'm used to, and what we did up north, was we didn't have dry embeds, which means every month, or whenever that receipt, when that roll-off reached capacity, you had to haul it off. Because we have dry embeds, that, that actually removes the water from it, which gives us a greater ability to pack it in, and that lowers the cost because the weight of the water, well, the water increases the weight, but also that, that reduces the amount of solids we can have within that roll-off. So, you'll see on the next ordinance, the Happy Hollow Rental, what we've actually done is we budgeted $65,000. This is the only amount that we've spent this year as it relates to the sludge removal. And without going too deep into detail with the pump rental for the rental for the Happy Hollow pump. So, this is creativity with the wastewater plant, but it's, it's a necessity for the operations.
Didn't we used to get some of those, have farmers come in and take some of this out?
That was the lime.
Isn't that the lime?
Yeah.
Not just the lime.
We're, we're discussing that internally because there are alternative routes, and especially with the lime at the water plant, that has become very costly. In fact, we received a, an estimate to do the lime lagoons, which we pushed out this year. We budgeted like $200,000. We've got one quote for $320,000. So it's entirely, it's just, we can't afford it anymore. So we are looking at alternative solutions, which would include utilizing farmers or a business to take this in the lime.
And Mayor, I do believe you're right. I think once upon a time, we were able to do both. And I know that there were some additional regulations that we had to stop, especially the lime. I don't know about the sludge, but I know on the lime, every farmer in eastern, you know, Clermont County used to come in.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Correct my wrong, Benjamin, but the, on the lime, we, we had this rotation for whatever reason. But my understanding is, we don't probably need to do it as often as we were doing it.
So that's what we're exploring right now. It, as I mentioned, it's become very costly. One of the hardest things as it relates to lime is its variable, and that has to do with how much water we process. So it's not like each year I can say it's going to go up one foot, let's just say, in depth. So that's one of the hardest things is measuring that. So what we're trying to figure out is, A, can we measure it to some extent, but B, how is it that we find an alternative? Because once again, $300,000, if you look at our rate study, that's, that's built into it. But, you know, next year, we have, say, $175,000 in, in capital improvement money in the water department. But that's because we're spending $250,000 for that lime lagoon cleaning. So either we just simply can only, we have two sides. So either we only do one side, or we find an alternative solution.
I would make an ordinance recommending that the law director, sorry, I would make a motion recommending the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey Waste, Inc. for the removal and disposal of sludge from the Milford Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, Happy Hollow Pump Rental, that is the next packet item. Earlier this year, city council approved the purchase of a Happy Hollow lift station that's down there by Castresi. That's about $110,000. It was a, it was a huge expenditure. We are still waiting for that to be delivered. They, they expect for the actual material to be delivered in November, which means that we've had to use a, we've had to rent a pump to, to cover us because we can't be, we have to pump the sewage out.
Did we used to have our own pump for the rental? We used to have a portable rental pump. I don't know if it was big enough.
So I, I know that we have a bypass pump. We have to use the biggest pump possible that we can rent from this company because of that hill.
Okay.
So that's, and, and there's, I believe there's two, I'm going to call them motors. I think that's the proper term, within that, that pit, in order to, to, to treat it. So that's, that's the issue we're running into, is, is, it's, it's a high cost. So we've got our, our, our short-term pumps, but we haven't been able to utilize that. We've had to rent it. So, as I discussed earlier, because we haven't been hauling off the sludge, what we're able to utilize is that money to pay for this rental. So that's, once again, fiscal responsibility and creativity out of the wastewater plant.
I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with rent a pump, to rent, I'm sorry, to rent a pump from Allied Pump Rental.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, Municipal Hospitality Workshop. I sort of touched on this earlier. This was a workshop that city staff, in conjunction with the fire department, I call it Team Milford, attended last week. Once again, this was a focus on local government hospitality, and, and really the primary focus was that of, it's not that we aren't doing certain things, it's how can we get better? And what are areas that we need to improve on? So I'll, I'll touch on this next meeting, as I plan to go more in-depth with some of the, the plans after this workshop. I, I made a mistake in, in that of, I ordered too many books, and I wanted to ensure that all the right people had the books. So the workshop itself was under my spending limit. Once we got the books built we got the books built in, then I went a little above my spending limit. So either council can give me permission to pay for the extra books or we send it back. That, there's two options on the table there, but I feel very strongly about this and I wanted to ensure that we had proper books, even for the law director. He's near perfect, but there's always room for improvement. So I want to ensure that we had enough books for everyone.
Is that a Lamborghini type of reference there?
Yeah, the yellow one. Yeah, just the yellow one.
I would make a motion recommending the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Municipal Hospitality Advisors, LLC to provide municipal hospitality training and workbooks at a cost not to exceed $7,625.
Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, city hall server replacement. This has, this has been a topic for probably longer than I've been here, I would hope. The city of Milford is, there's obvious IT upgrades that we've all discussed that need to happen. The server itself, we're running out of capacity. I mean, like, really, we're getting close and it really became an emergency when we went to complete a financial software, finance software update and we didn't have enough capacity to complete that. So not only are we not able to complete the update, not only are we running out of capacity, but by not completing that update, we would not be able to close the books at the end of the year. So it's a necessity. It's, unfortunately, it comes with a cost, but it had to be done and it would have been done eventually. It just happened to be an emergency in the sense that if we can't close the books, that's an obvious concern for us. So by getting this passed and by allowing us to purchase it, that would allow for us to upgrade the needed IT, the server, complete the upgrade, or the update, and then close the books out at the end of the year.
And I believe we talked about this, Mayor, maybe a budget or two ago and we kind of pushed on. Is there any regular updates that we should be doing, that we've maybe deferred over the last couple of years? And I know that's a big number and I know it's important and I'm not disputing that this shouldn't be done immediately, but is there something else that we could also be doing so that, A, that number is not so big as we add a server capacity, anything along that lines? Cloud storage or whatever we're doing to be able to free up as much space as we can and still keep it secure, obviously.
Right. So I would, first off, I'll take a step back. So obviously, council is well aware that we switched IT companies earlier this year. It's been a tremendous change. I think anyone on staff would second that. We are going to be establishing a five-year plan, which is, you know, not rocket science, but it's something that we have perhaps neglected that we need to do. Not only did we have a server that needed to be upgraded, we actually had several laptops and computers that, starting in October, would no longer be supported by Windows because they were so outdated. So we've been able to get a lot of those replaced. The server is obviously above my spending limit, which is why we're going that direction. A lot of the platforms that we've gone to have had cloud-based options and that's what we look at and that's why we've sort of been, we really vetted this out to ensure that we weren't getting something that is too big because obviously, cloud-based solutions are becoming more and more of the preferred option. So this is something that we believe supports us in terms of what we have to keep locally, but also it ensures that it's not too large as we know cloud-based options are certainly coming to the forefront.
Did we look at all at the potential of maybe leasing a server as opposed to buying? If we are going to go with something on-prem as opposed to cloud, what's the estimated useful lifespan of the server that we're getting ready to spend all this money on? Do we know any of that?
I don't have an answer to that. I don't believe that we discussed that in terms of leasing. I don't believe we discussed that.
Just from like a, you know, look at, look at it from all angles standpoint and if, you know, if we are going to be upgrading, say, every five years, say, the next go-around that we have, it may be worth our time to look into like a lease type of situation if we're going to stay with a physical machine that's on-premises just because if we are going to have to upgrade every, again, say, five to seven years, it might make more sense financially. I don't know, but it may be something we want to look into in the future.
But from a budget standpoint, dovetail off what he's saying, this is well within what we had allocated in a budget somewhere, one of our funds. We're not having to transfer more funds from a budget. Or is this an, an item that's going to put us over one budget or another?
So I think we are pulling from about 10 different accounts to cover this.
Okay.
So this was, there was several dollars budgeted for IT, not specifically just server per se, but just IT needs as a whole. So we're certainly spreading this over several funds, but it is within the funds that have been budgeted.
But to Vice Mayor's point, this is something, obviously, with budget coming up, that we could have a line item, knowing that we're going to need to invest in this much more heavily than, not that this is last minute, but basically better planning, you know? And again, something along that lines, just from a budget standpoint, I think would be beneficial for all of us.
I think it may be worth our time to ask our new IT company, since we are heading into that budget cycle, what this useful, what they think, obviously, they have no crystal ball, right?
Right.
But they may be able to give us, on average, this will last you X amount of years to where we can account for that years in advance and kind of plan accordingly.
I don't know if chief remembers. I want to say that Aaron said, did he say close to 10 years? I don't want to put you on the spot. I do want to, yeah, true, too late. I think you said like five to seven. I think it was close to 10, but for some reason, between seven and 10 rings a bell.
That's longer than I thought.
Yeah, I hear you. It was looking changed technology-wise by then.
Right.
But, but I can get a hard number and then relay that to council.
I think it would be helpful going into budget cycle.
Well, and just to dovetail, change the IT, I mean, I think for years, ever since council, we heard the frustration from staff. Today, I had an issue and our IT person actually called me within two hours. I mean, I couldn't even tell you the gentleman who was here for the last 10 years' name, let alone to have that person be responsive. So I do believe we have leaps and bounds ahead as far as IT goes, so.
With that, I would make a recommendation that, or a motion that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a dedicated server replacement for city hall from ROI Technologies, LLC, in the amount not to, this is the amount here, in the amount not to exceed $69,093.90.
Second.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, certifying city of Milford existing levies. If you look at the packet item, or within the packet, you'll see all the levies, excuse me, that the city of Milford has that we need to yearly pass an ordinance, certifying the amounts, and then we send it to the county. So you'll look at the general fund, firing EMS, and then the park levy. Within that, you'll be able to see what the expected revenue sources are for each of those levies. And that's important, one, because we need to send it, that's part of the Ohio revised code that we send it to the county, but two, from a budgeting standpoint, this gives us a good idea as to what we need to put in that line item for the revenue sources. So once again, this is a yearly thing. That city council is to pass and then we send to the auditor's office.
I would make a motion that the law director draft a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Second.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. We are on to fire department ambulance opioid funding. This is simply a discussion, and if council's in support, then we can take action at the next meeting, but I wanted to discuss the opioid money that the city has received. In the packet, you'll see what the total amount that we have received balance available at the bottom, $72,455.47. Through some internal discussions, we talked about what are our plans with the opioid money and the city really doesn't have any obvious items to spend that opioid money on. However, as part of the fire department ambulance purchase, the opioid funds can be used as a funding source to offset that total cost. And through the discussions internally, we feel that this is the best use of those funds. It would help reduce the cost of the fire department for that ambulance purchase. And for that reason, I am making a recommendation to council to consider the use of those funds for the offsetting cost of the ambulance.
Is this only yearly or?
No, that's, I can't tell you how many years that
It says as of 9/18, but I guess my question is, if we're going to continue to get the fund, can we just funnel those? Can we have the ordinance base? Because, and Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot, Baird or Mark, what is going to be the total cost of that ambulance, I believe? It's significant, I know. Yeah.
$475,000.
Those give or take.
That's all. Why are we even, that's it? Why are we talking about this? Just kidding.
If we're going to have an, and to me, if we're going to be doing this is to help offset those costs since we can use it for that and
You were saying that they continually
Is that a recurring amount?
Instead of having to have it every time.
Now, so
You know.
You'll, you'll see, actually, that's a lie. So you'll see on the revenues, it dated back to '23.
Okay.
So you'll see each of the payments that we've received total, that's $73,000. Now, we have spent some, there's three expenses that are listed on there, but I think that would be great if, once again, we don't have a true plan for the, for that opioid funding. So if that was something, to your point, that we could just continue and assuming that, you know, if, let's just say it reached $100,000, that there was $100,000 we could spend on the ambulance, then I think that would be great and I think that'd be awesome.
I, I mean, to me, it kind of, if we're going to go, if we're in an agreement to give the money, let's just continue. So we're not coming back every few months, you know, when that fund builds back up. So that, and law director, I don't
Can you even just do that?
Is there?
Well, and we don't have an ordinance prepared, so we'll mock up whatever language needs to be.
I'm not saying we're going to do it tonight, but I'm just saying if we're
And the other thing that's worth mentioning, I think, that kind of goes to your point, the ambulance will not be delivered for, what, two years?
Two to three years.
Okay, so hopefully, there's going to be a little bit more money in that account as well. So it's not like that needs to be done today.
And I guess my other ques, I know how we're getting, there's not any pending legislation that would stop this money from coming in.
Not to my knowledge.
Nothing like what they're trying to do with the property tax and, you know, anything
This is, this is settlement money.
Yeah.
From the lawsuits.
Right, from the opiate, yeah.
And as far as I know, that whole process, I've not seen the first thing that undermines the integrity of the process.
So it's more into perpetuity, I guess, as long, or whatever.
There are settlement agreements that are in place and
Okay.
It's following along, the best that I can tell with those settlement agreements.
I like this idea, but I have one other question. Could we potentially use a little bit of this recurring money to pay for maintenance on the new diffusulators that we're having installed in our parks to keep those going forever? I'm not trying to take money away from the fire department or anything like that.
Do bear in mind, there are restrictions on the use of the money.
Sure.
Directly related to opioid, the opioid crisis as the settlement was laid out.
Okay, gotcha. Not being familiar with
I'm not trying to be greedy.
No, 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 I hear you and I appreciate that. I'm not aware of what all those restrictions are, so it was more just a question. I do like this idea a lot. I would really like to see us look into that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, if you look at the list, the money is not going to be as significant because if you look at the list, our pharmacies are dwindling.
Yes.
So that's the unfortunate part of this. So, anyway, but
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah. I just think that, you know, if we're going to do this, just let's make it smooth and, you know.
Is everyone else on the general agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. Then we will add that to the next agenda and Mr. Law Director will come up with the right words to make that happen after he has five cookies over there. All right, moving on.
Careful. You don't want to stir the old man up.
It might be a six one.
It might be.
All right, moving on, designated outdoor refreshment area Dora. This is a very simple discussion. Quite frankly, I don't think this will take a whole lot of time. Over the last probably 30 days, there's, there's been some conversation regarding the Dora cups. And if anyone wants to speak up, then certainly speak up and make sure that I'm saying this correctly, but last year, we decided to no longer sort of facilitate this process and turn it over to the businesses themselves, so that of purchasing the Dora cups and then they would handle it all within the businesses instead of the city of Milford that historically bought the cups and then sold the cups to the businesses. Here recently, the cups have exceeded that dollar figure, you know, where you sell the cup for a dollar. It's, I think it's pencil that to, say, a dollar fifty or a dollar sixty, seventy, whatever it is. So it's, it's well above that dollar. There's been several businesses that have had discussions and quite frankly, reached out and asked if we could adopt what is a similar process in other municipalities where we just use a standard cup and then we print stickers to put on those cups and that would significantly reduce the cost. So this is just a discussion. My personal opinion is, is we're already out of the Dora cup business, so as long as there's uniformity in terms of the stickers, I don't really, I don't see an issue. I've talked to the police chief. I know that he is in alignment with that and, you know, the label that is, that was created, that can be changed. What I do like about it is we, I think this was done internally. We put the Milford logo on it. There's also going to be a QR code that would take us to the Dora tab on the website that would list the rules of the Dora district. So I kind of like that, but just wanted to throw this out to council and see what council's thoughts are. Once again, the whole sticker itself can totally change. It's really just the principle behind the topic here, but
We're not in the sticker business.
It would all, it would, it would remain the same. The only thing that I want is, I want consistency with the sticker.
Absolutely.
So I just want to be able to say
I think that we, if the city set up where the stickers are coming from, but then the businesses go online and order their own stickers.
Yeah, I don't want to buy it. I don't want to be involved with it. I just want to ensure that we have one sticker, so that way when we're enforcing something, we know what to look for.
And I believe there are half dozen or so other now Dora communities that are doing this sticker, so we're not the
I think Loveland does it, Wyoming does it.
Wyoming, Loveland, Fairfield, several.
Several communities. It just significantly reduces the cost.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
I talked to the brewery and they have these cups already on hand anyway for water, so it's maybe so much easier
Right.
Just to slap a sticker on a cup.
Yeah, they can just buy, you know. I guess the only question, does everyone, the sticker's the same, but the cup's different. Does that matter?
That was my question. Are we going to have, are all the businesses going to have a consistent cup that they're all going to be using?
I would say we make them get the clear plastic cup.
I can't put a Dora sticker on this cup. Yeah. And seriously, I mean, I'm not
I was assuming they have to have the clear plastic cup.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So is there some sort of, and again, I don't know what the rules are in other communities, but
Do they have regulations on size or?
Well, I, yeah, I think if we just come up with a standard cup, you know, once again, we don't want to be in the business of
No, we don't want to
But I do strongly believe in consistency with this, so that way we can, you know, ensure that it's being operated to the
The same as the stickers, can we find the cup at a decent price and just say, you have to order your cups and stickers from this place?
I think it would be easier for us to say, here's the sticker and where you order it from. You can put it on a cup that is no larger than X and let them worry about it from, you can put it on a cup that is no larger than X, and let them worry about finding the cup, right? Otherwise, we're putting the city back in the cup business, which is what we are.
No, I mean, they go online and order their own cups.
I hear what you're saying, right?
I'm just saying, we say, here's where you could go.
Finding.
Yeah. It can't be a thirty-two ounce cup, is my question.
Not with that attitude.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to be a sixteen ounce, like a sixteen ounce, whatever the size is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, at least, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chamberlain, go ahead.
Well, and can the QR code also list the businesses that offer the Dora? Like, in our Dora, you know what I mean, so?
I think what we do is, we put that on the tab itself and say, these are the businesses that are participating in the Dora program.
Assuming the Dora rules, there is a limit with the size.
That's what I'm-
I figured that's what Mr. Alfred Gies is over there checking.
New gallon jugs, like the rest of Park, with the half gallon milk jugs.
Dora-approved cups, sixteen ounce plastic cups that are frosted and turn red when filled with cold liquid. That's what your, the legislation says.
Oh, because that's what we started with.
That's what the cups-
So this proposed change, we would need to pass an ordinance amending that legislation.
But we also have to go through the process, too, to change. So you got to go through the public hearing, so you got to go through all that. Otherwise, it's Dora-approved cups, sixteen ounce plastic cups that are frosted and turn red when filled with cold liquid.
Because those are expensive.
So, me, right now, hearing that, I would recommend that we kind of move forward down the path of understanding we're going to have to do public hearings to change the cups as they are anyway, in order to get to the stickers. And then we have time to kind of figure out, we're going to send them off to get their own clear plastic cup, or whatever the case may be, but we're going to have to change the legislation anyway, so.
I'm in agreement with that, I just want to make sure that council was at least fine with entertaining it.
Yes, absolutely.
That's all I want to discuss.
Yep.
All right, perfect. Look at that, record time. All right, one last thing.
The garbage stickers?
The purchase of Neco radio meter heads. So what this is, is yearly, we purchase meters, and what we utilize these meters for is, if it's new houses, or if we have old meters that are, you know, not reading correctly or slow, then we replace them. So part of this is to ensure that we have adequate levels for the remaining year, but also to ensure that we have some in our supply room, so that way, they're readily accessible. So this is something that is budgeted, but once again, this is up above my spending limit, which is why we are here today.
I would make a motion recommending the Law Director draft an ordinance authorizing the purchase of meter equipment from Neco for the managing and restocking of inventory to ensure the necessary equipment for the water department.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, I think that's the end.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
So move. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And that takes us to Mr. Pacheco.
We got a hip hop.
And the ordinances and resolutions.
He had to go get another cookie.
That's the way making-
You better get some water, because this is a long read.
I know, it's partly why.
That's why we made cookies, so.
Partly why.
They're not dry cookies.
Yeah.
Wow.
He's like, Parrish?
Yeah, right. So many words. Ordinance number twenty, ordinance number twenty-five dash three-nine-nine, an ordinance declaring improvements to parcels of real property to be a public purpose exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels, establishing a tax increment equivalent fund. Whereas, section fifty-seven oh nine point four oh at SEC of the Ohio Revise Code, the Municipal TIF Act, authorize municipalities to participate in a financing technique commonly known as tax increment financing, TIF. And whereas, this city council of the city of Milford, Ohio, desires to use the authority granted pursuant to the Municipal TIF Act in connection with certain improvements in the city in order to meet the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience needs of the area. And whereas, pursuant to such authority, in particular fifty-seven oh nine, section fifty-seven oh nine forty C of the Ohio Revise Code, the city council is determined to create an incentive district and declare public improvements to certain parcels of real property located in the city to be a public purpose, and exempt such improvements from real property taxation in an amount equal to seventy-five percent of the assessed valuation of the improvements for a period of ten years of TIF exemption. And whereas, the parcels of real property with respect to which the TIF exemption shall apply are specifically identified and depicted in exhibit A attached here to each individual as parcel, and collectively, the parcels, which parcels are not more than three hundred acres and are enclosed by a continuous battery. And whereas, the city engineer is certified that the public infrastructure serving the proposed incentive district is inadequate to meet the development needs of said district, as evidenced by a written economic development plan or urban renewal plan for the district that has been adopted by this legislative authority of the subdivision, and whereas the population of the city is less than twenty-five thousand, and whereas the city has conducted the required public hearing on the consideration of this ordinance on August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in accordance with the Municipal TIF Act, and whereas, as required by section fifty-seven oh nine point eight-three of the Ohio Revise Code, prior to the consideration of this ordinance, notice has been provided to the boards of education of, A, the Milford Exempt Village School District on July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and Great Oaks Career Campuses on July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regarding the consideration of this ordinance. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of municipality of Milford, council of city of Milford, Ohio, with at least two-thirds of the members elected thereto concurring section one. Pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine forty C of the Ohio Revise Code, this city council hereby creates the Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF, the boundaries of which shall be coextensive with the boundaries of the parcels, and shall include the parcels that specifically identified and depicted in exhibit A attached here to, which parcels are located in the incorporated area of the city, section two, that this city council hereby finds and declares that certain public improvements in the city to wit the planning, design, and construction of public street improvements, including without limitation, street paving, guardrail improvements, medium improvements, increased signage, crosswalks, walkways, landscaping, traffic control vices, and alterations to existing streets, including intersection improvements, turn lanes, and traffic signals. The planning, design, and construction of utilities, including without limitation, water facilities, sanitary sewers, sewers, gas mains, electric facilities, communication facilities, stormwater sewers, and retention detention facilities. The planning, design, and construction of public safety, park, and recreation facilities, the creation or enhancement of buffer areas and open areas necessary for ensuring the compatibility of adjacent land uses, the acquisition or construction of public service facilities, including facilities, safety services, and equipment related thereto, demolition, including demolition on private property, when determined to be necessary for economic development purposes, and the purchase of property rights of way and easements or other rights in property necessary for the completion of the public interest improvements listed above. The public improvements are for a public purpose and are necessary for the further development of the parcels for the creation of jobs, increasing property values, and the provision of adequate traffic control in the city. This further development of the parcels will place direct additional demand on the public improvements. Section three, that pursuant to section fifty-seven oh nine point forty C of the Ohio Revise Code, further improvements to the parcels in the Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF occurring after the date of this ordinance are hereby declared to be a public purpose and are exempt from real property taxation, commencing with the first year that begins after the effective date of this ordinance, and in which an improvement resulting from the construction of a structure on any parcel first appears on the tax duplicate of the real and public utility property ends on the earlier of, A, ten years after such date, or B, the date on which the city can no longer require service payments to be paid on the improvements, all in accordance with the Municipal TIF Act, or C, the date on which the public improvements are paid in full from the tax increment equivalent fund as defined in section six hereof, but in no case shall the improvements be exempted from taxation for more than ten years. It is hereby determined that, little i, a portion of the improvements shall be exempt from real property taxation, little two, i, such portion shall be seventy-five percent of the assessed value of the improvements, and little i three, the public improvements directly benefit or once made will directly benefit the Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF. Section four, that during the term of the TIF exemption, the owner or owners of the improvements to the parcel shall be required to make annual service payments in lieu of taxes, the service payments to Claremont County Treasurer, honor before the final dates for payments of real property taxes, which service payments shall be charged and collected in the same manner and the same amount as the real property taxes that would have been charged and payable against the improvements to the parcels but for the TIF exemption. The city council hereby expresses its intention and authorizes the city manager or his designee and the clerk of council from time to time hereafter to sign such documents as may be necessary and appropriate to assure the payment of such service payments. Section five, that there is hereby established in the city treasury the Garfield Avenue Incentive District TIF Public Improvement Tax Increment Equivalent Fund, the Tax Increment Equivalent Fund, into which the service payments shall be deposited, money in the tax increment equivalent fund shall be used to finance public improvements and is otherwise permitted by the Municipal TIF Act. Section six, that the city manager or his designee, the finance director, and the clerk of council, and to the extent necessary, members of city council and other city officials, are hereby authorized to do all things necessary and proper to carry out sections one through six of the ordinance above, including but not limited to filing any required applications for tax exemption with the Claremont County Auditor and/or the Ohio Tax Commissioner. Section seven, pursuant to fifty-seven, oh, section fifty-seven oh nine point forty i of the Ohio Revise Code, the clerk of council is hereby directed to deliver a copy of this ordinance to the Director of the Ohio Department of Development within fifteen days after its passage, honor before March thirty-one of each year, that the TIF exemption remains in effect, the city manager or other authorized officer of the city shall prepare and submit the director of the Ohio, to the Director of the Ohio Department of Development, a status report required by the Municipal TIF Act. Section eight, that the clerk of council is hereby directed to forward a copy of this ordinance to the Claremont County Auditor. Section nine, that it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of the city council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting, and that all deliberations of the city council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revise Code, section ten. Under, and in accordance with section twelve point oh five of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
I think that's the most sections in any ordinance since I've been on city council, so I'm really tempted to not, but I will make a motion to suspend the rules, and read by title only. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
By the way, there will be an intermission, if you will hold tight, folks. Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-nine, three-nine-nine, an ordinance declaring improvements to parcels of real property to be a public improvement, exempting such improvements from real property taxation, declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels, and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Now, I drafted the rest of these. Ordinance number twenty-five dash four hundred, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey Waste Inc. for the removal and disposal of sludge from the Milford wastewater treatment, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city municipality of Milford, Ohio, section one. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey Waste Inc. for the removal and disposal of sludge from the Milford wastewater treatment plant for ten thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars seventy-one cents, per the attached agreement. The agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter, section two. Under and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash four hundred, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rumkey Waste Inc. for the removal and disposal of sludge from the Milford wastewater treatment.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash four oh one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to rent a pump from Allied Pump Rental, now therefore be it ordained by the council of municipality of Milford, Ohio, section one. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to rent a lift station bypass pump from Allied Pump Rental, per the attached agreement. The city manager is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary for such rental. The attached agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter, section two. Under and in accordance with sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash four zero one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to rent a pump from Allied Pump Rental.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash four oh two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with municipal hospitality, mhm, that's what you get for making jokes about it. Ordinance number twenty-five dash four oh two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with Municipal Hospitality Advisors LLC to provide municipal hospitality training and workbooks at a cost not to exceed seven thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, now therefore be it ordained by the council of municipality of Milford, Ohio, section one. City council hereby authorizes the city manager to contract with Municipal Hospitality Advisors